And the school committee. The clerk will call the roll. Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty? Pelletier? Carrera?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And President Kamara. Would you call the roll?
Call to order, the Tuesday, April 11th joint meeting of the Faller School Committee and the Falers City Council, deputies call the roll.
Mr. Aguil? Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Lawrie?
Here.
Ms. Carrera?
Here.
Ms. Roger?
Here.
Mayor Coogan? Quick a little.
You want me to read the...
Madam Vice President?
Do you want to?
Madam Vice President, I think before we begin the overall meeting, we should make a comment in the...
On the absences?
With regard to Counsel President Kamara and others who...
Just so that everyone knows, Counsel Liberty is out ill, and as is Counsel Pelletier, he's doing much better. And unfortunately, Counsel President Joe Kamara lost his mom last night, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Coogan, do you want to read the opening statement?
Counsel Vice President Perrault, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Could everyone rise for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Mayor Coogan, do you have from the school department a slideshow?
We do. One other quick thing, Counsel, is any citizens' input for the joint meeting?
No, the citizen input, the only citizen input we have is before council.
Okay, I'd like to call down Kevin Almeida and Maria Ponce, along with Bridget Alman and Seth Aiken, to do the presentations for the joint meeting.
So both the school committee and the city council have PowerPoint presentations, and the school committee will go first.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Coogan, Madam Vice President, members of the city council, members of our school committee, as well as members of the public. Tonight, we present to you, from the Faler Public Schools, our draft annual budget. Just wanted to frame it before I turn it over to Kevin, who's really going to get to the technical side of it. Our budget is a moral document that tells us what we value and what we fund. It's really used as a planning tool for us, based on our priorities. It's a, we actually have had a collaborative process where we've surveyed our principals, our department heads, senior staff, in regards to what to prioritize. Our budget is based on that. What you will see is actually that the priorities have, really, every year, we're not going to present new priorities, because what we're doing is deepening the work. So we are building on last year's work. All of our work is rooted in raising student achievement, and we have a responsibility to present a budget that's intentional, and that is actually a responsibility to put the tools and the resources in the hands of our students, of our teachers and staff, so that we can raise student achievement. Certainly, we know that we are not where we need to be, and we need to really make sure that our investments reflect what we're saying we value, right? It's really, what you will see in our budget is that we are focused on what is closest to the classroom. Last year, we prioritized a pair of professionals in every kindergarten class, as well as every first grade class, in addition to support staff. Throughout the year, the best part is that we've had funds available, and throughout the year, we've made some major investments in SEL, supporting the needs of our students. We've added additional school adjustment counselors. We've added seventeen, twenty-one, actually, what we call SEL liaisons there, that triage, to triage student behavior and support the school adjustment council, so that they can provide the counseling services. So that is something that, a position that's growing, that you'll see in our budget, we're adding. And we are also adding some more teachers, instructional staff, so that could be instructional coaches, that could be interventionists, and in some cases, we have, especially at the high school, where our enrollment has increased, so we had to add a team of teachers. So you'll see, what we've done is, we've added a math teacher, an E.L.A. teacher, a science, social studies, et cetera. So all of our investments are in supporting our students and supporting student growth. We have some administrative positions, as you will see, and really, we've had a, we are investing in reorganizing our facilities and operations department, so you, some of those positions are administrative, because we are dividing that department and have different divisions, and we need some people to oversee each of those divisions. So we have not, we have been intentional about not padding the budget with administrative salaries that are going to, that are not close to the trenches, if you will. The work needs to be done in the classroom, in raising student achievement, so, and that's been our focus. It's a student-centered budget, it's about deepening our work, we would not put a budget before you that wasn't sustainable. It's something that we have worked hard and we're proud to do, to make sure that we move our district forward. I think every single person in this room wants to see our district be successful, and we have a responsibility to do that, that's why we're here. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kevin and have him walk us through. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. So this slide just shows you the FRPS student enrollment, and it provides you with how our student enrollment has grown, by one hundred and seventy-nine students within the past The Student Opportunity Act, it was signed into law in the fall of 2019, and what it did was, it realized that, it brought in true costs for specific areas of our budget. And so it realized that it was underfunding specific areas, specifically around low-income students, special ed students. The funding was low on the healthcare side, any of all students. So what the Student Opportunity Act is meant to do, is it's meant to bring the funding for the schools back in line within a seven-year timeframe. But of note, the first year was not funded of the Student Opportunity Act, so it will be funded over six years, and FY24 will represent the third year of funding.
Madam President, just a point of order. Are we going to wait to the...
Counsel Kadeem.
Are we just going to wait to the end of the presentations, or if we have questions, do you want us...
It's the choice of the council, if you want to wait till...
I guess I would ask, I would ask the folks presenting, how do you prefer?
Would you like to stop along the way?
If we, I guess if we could, just, I've got a, if we can just go back to the enrollment, I mean, maybe it's not a simple question. It's a simple question, I don't know the response is going to be simple, but just in terms of the enrollment, so I think it was your second slide, outside of your title.
I believe it was the five hundred and seventy-nine additional students this year?
Yes, so, looking at pre-K, obviously, we see the increase on the sixty-four students, K to five, plus two, I guess, can you, do we know what the reason is for the decrease in students between middle school, and I guess that always tends to be a concern for parents, and it, is it, I guess, how do we address those concerns or issues, if we know what they are, if they're tangible, and if, you know, are we providing the resources that are needed? I know, just in talking to folks, you know, going to K to five, that there's always that fear of going to the middle schools, and maybe they go back to the, to private schools, and then I, you know, it makes sense that when you start to see ninth and twelfth grade, you've got a lot of students coming from the private schools, going to Durfee. So that, that to me makes sense. I think the number of eighty-three students, you know, I think overall is probably a small number, but it's still a significant number, just looking at it, and I'm just trying to see if we've even began to analyze the root cause for that. And if there's anything that you need from us, in terms of, you know, resources or additional funding, to really try to address that, that concern, and with that cohort of grade six to eight?
It's a valid question, Mr. Kadeem. Certainly, we can, the answer's not easy, so we're going to have to go by school and look at that data to see if it's coming from one particular school, or, because I would say it probably is coming from the traditional middle schools, but I don't want to answer that and say that that's exactly how it's happening. However, we will do a data dive into that. Tomorrow, we'll look at where the students have exited from, and we'll provide you that information. We'll share.
I guess I don't necessarily need it for tomorrow, so please don't go back and try to...
No, but we'll, we'll get that information to the council.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate that. I yield.
Counsel Kilby?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. So the only question I had tonight, Kadeem opened it up to questions, so Counsel Kadeem. We had a drastic change in student population over the last two years. So what are we doing to recruit teachers that mirror our student population? I believe I had, I talked to Attorney Greg Brilliant today, and former school committee man, and he was one of, I served with him years ago, gosh, it must have been twenty-four years ago, and that was a concern back then, is what, we have to get teachers, I think, I'm not talking about them affirmatively, or, I don't know, maybe in a fashion I am, but we need a population of educators that make our schools inviting, make them feel welcome, and I don't, you know, I remember Pat Foley, God rest his soul, he made a comment saying, "There's too many people," I mean, again, I don't want to seem like this, people will take this the wrong way, "but there's too many employees that look just like me." So, and I know it's probably supply and demand, and it's a tough question to ask you, but what are we doing to recruit more teachers that kind of mirror our population in the school department? And I know it's a complex question, but I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yep, that's a loaded question. Certainly, we are not any different than what we're seeing across the country, there's a staffing shortage, but I could not agree more. Our kids need to be, see adults that look like them, that can relate to them.
It just makes it more, makes it more inviting and more comfortable, even right down to the parents, I mean...
Well, it's, I agree, it's relatability.
School should be, and it is, I'm not saying we're floundering on that, in terms of the elementary schools, but it, we start losing that, that bond a little bit, I think, when the kids go to middle school and high school, and it goes a long way to have a, you know, a big guy like Paul Hott in there, and just mentoring, so to speak, other students that culturally, they feel comfortable with.
Right.
I felt that way for a long, long time.
I agree. We have, actually, have had rolling recruitment events, both at the district level. I know that tomorrow, there's one, there's also going to be one next week in Boston that we're attending. We are also reaching out through networks that our principals are part of. We have one that we're planning at the end of April in, for, on a Saturday, for district-wide. So we are making efforts to recruit. It's not an easy time, but I agree that that's work that's ongoing. We have increased the numbers of staff that look like our children and can relate to our, it's more about our staff, our students, our families, all being able to relate to one another, speaking the language. It, you're going to take away some barriers, right? So if a parent wants to go to speak to a teacher or to an administrator, it, you know, they don't speak English, we have a responsibility to support them in that way. So we are, we have been working on that. We are, we are not anywhere near where we need to be, and we need to continue to work on that, and recruiting and retaining staff that our kids, that look like our kids, and our kids can relate to.
Yeah, so I'll end with this, just a comment, that I think, again, it's not about me, but I kind of have a unique experience in terms of, my wife's a fifth-grade teacher, and she's excellent what she does. And obviously, couples talk, we sit down, and there's wonderful things going on. So that said, I was a member of the school committee for ten years, and it's just a recurring issue in terms of, you know, the things I was taught, I, and I was a teacher for a while, then all the things that I was taught in school, and I learned on the school committee, and I saw at Durfee, working with Mayor Coogan and others, that it's really important, very, very important. So we could probably, obviously, I don't care if it takes a couple of weeks or a month, but I'd like to see, like, the percentage of our population that work directly with kids, and a reflection of what that looks like in comparison to our student population.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry about that, but I don't, I don't want to say I'm sorry, but it's, it's something that's been on my mind, and getting a call from a colleague or friend, a former school committee person, I think it's an important question to ask, so, I yield, thank you.
Counsel Raposo?
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, just curious, on the overall enrollment of the district, as we stand today?
Ten thousand four hundred and forty-seven.
And across those grade bands, do you have the breakdown?
I do not, but I can get you that.
Okay.
Scott is here on this computer, we can get you that.
If we could, that'd be great.
By grade level.
So my only question goes back to pre-K, and I know that the district opened up additional space at the old Montessori school. And if I listened to the meeting correctly, there's plans to do additional. So the next year, the plan is, you're going to continue the lease of the Montessori, the old Montessori school, to continue that program. Is there a plan for an additional building going into next year, to increase that pre-K enrollment?
Well, we are working on spacing. We, we are working with the city and looking for space so that we can acquire and expand. So that is in the works.
Okay.
We also have our own, we have a property on Globe Street, the Old Stone School, that we are exploring and putting some units there, so we do have a plan for expansion.
Okay, cool. Yeah, if you can just give me those breakdowns, that'd be great. I yield, thank you.
Mr. Almeida, can you continue?
So this slide just shows you what the Chapter Seventy funding has looked like from 2019 to 2023, and it shows you, for 2024, the proposed Chapter Seventy funding is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, a hundred and eighty-eight million, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars in the governor's budget, which represents an increase of just over nineteen million dollars, eleven point six percent increase from last year. As you can see from this slide, 2022, I'm sorry, 2022 was the first year, 2023 is the second year, and 2024 is the third year, as I had mentioned previously. So that's where, that's where you're seeing the increases of the Student Opportunity Act coming into play.
Could I just, so, would you say that Student Opportunity Act, what's it going, 2027, is there...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
So I, just another, I guess, global question that I have, and it's really in the next slide, I kind of jumped the gun a little bit, but it all revolves around the Chapter Seventy, and then the minimum contribution. So from, I guess my question globally is, have we begun to have discussion, and by "we," I mean the administrations, you know, the city and the school department, in terms of the sustainability and affordability for the increase, especially when it comes to the local contribution? Just when you're looking at, obviously, twenty-three, a six percent increase, that's two million dollars, twenty-four, a two percent, and shame on me, I don't even know what the two and a half generates, I should probably know that, I know it in my community, but it's probably pretty close, right? Two and a half percent is pretty close to that, two point one million, two point two million dollars. So right off the bat, you know, going to the two and a half levy really is going into the contributions from the city. Have there been any discussions in terms of how we can approach that moving forward from an affordability standpoint?
I don't know that we've had specific discussions that way, but we've discussed the budget and what it looks like going forward.
For both, I guess?
Yeah, we've actually been looking at, like, the indirect costs, and Kevin and I have been getting together, we've had emails going back and forth, and we're taking a deep dive into the indirects and the actual expenditures, because nobody wants to get that letter saying that, you know, we have to send over another million, two million.
Okay. And do we know, I know there was, in the governor's number there, she's, I forgot how much it was set aside, but for the local contribution relief, I think it was ten million dollars, I don't, maybe that's a little light, but I think that's what was out there in the budget. Do we know how much of that is coming down to either the city or the schools?
The additional relief?
Yeah.
I mean, no, they've been talking about it, but we haven't seen concrete numbers.
Okay. So we don't know what the breakdown would be for, if that gets moved through the budget, what a four of us contribution would be?
I don't know exactly what the, I haven't seen anything concrete that's in black and white that says what Fall River's amount would be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you yield, Counsel Kadeem?
I do, I'm sorry.
Mr. Almeida?
Sure. So as you can see from this slide, this is the required local contribution, and what it's from 2019 to 2023. 2024 proposed on the governor's budget is thirty-eight million, five twenty-four forty-nine, which is nearly a two point two million dollar increase from last year. So, you know, in regards to the Chapter Seventy required local contribution, the split proposed in the governor's budget is eighty-three, seventy, eighty-three percent, Chapter Seventy, seventeen percent required local contribution. And historically, it's been around eighty-twenty, so it's, you know, transitioned a little bit over the years. This slide is the net school spending slide. So as you can see, from 2019, net school spending at that time was a hundred, just about a hundred and fifty million dollars. In the FY24 budget, it's proposed to be, under the governor's budget, two hundred and twenty-six million, five forty-four, nine twenty-six, which is just under a twenty-two million dollar increase, or a ten point six percent increase from last year. So speaking on the indirect cost agreement, so the indirect cost agreement is the agreement between the city and the schools, and it just outlines what the costs are that are on the city side, that are going to be placed on the end-of-the-year report, and if and when a discrepancy occurs, and the agreement can be modified through an agreement with the city, or by bringing in the DESC as the final arbiter. This slide just shows you what the costs, the current costs are that are eligible for net school spending that are reported on the end-of-the-year report through the indirect cost agreement. Health insurance, retirement, assessments for special ed, school choice on the charter schools, property and liability insurance, and they're all listed up there. So these costs here are the costs that are reported on the end-of-the-year report, but that are not eligible for net school spending, and that those costs specifically are the costs associated with debt, principal, and interest, the bond anticipation notes, school crossing guards, regional assessments for Diamond and Bristol Aggie, purchase of land and buildings, and equipment over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Transportation, so from 2019 to 2022, I've included the costs here for transportation and what they've been. Back in 2019, costs were about nine point two million, and in 2022, they were eleven point four million, so, but you can see the transition from nineteen to twenty to twenty-one to twenty-two, and the reason the cost decreased was that it was during the COVID times and not having schools, so that's why the transition from the nine point two down. And again, transportation is not eligible for net school spending.
Madam Vice President?
Counsel Raposo?
Mr. Almeida, out of curiosity, where do you feel the twenty-three fiscal year is looking for for transportation?
So the total twenty-three, twenty-three for this year?
Yeah.
It's probably going to cost just over, just over twelve million dollars.
Okay. So not jumping ahead, but one of your later slides is the proposed transportation budget of ten million. So why the decrease?
So I put in the budget to fund twelve point, it was twelve point eight million dollars in total is what I put in the budget, and in the budget, I propose that one point five million is funded through Circuit Breaker. I propose that eight hundred thousand is funded through ESER, the ESER III account, and for pre-K transportation, and five hundred thousand to be funded from the McKinney-Vento homeless account.
Is ESER II funds eligible for that as well?
It is, so, but ESER II ends in September, on September 30th, so we can't charge anything, you know, after September 30th. So that's why I proposed ESER III.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you.
So this slide is the health insurance slide. As you can see, the health insurance has been, you know, relatively, you know, the same over the last several years. We haven't seen any major drastic increases. Last year, it was in twenty-two, it increased a little bit from twenty-one, but the insurance has been pretty stable. So I'm not going to read this slide, but this, this general law is Chapter 7168, is the law around the maintenance of building, and the fact that maintaining buildings lies on the city side, so any costs that are over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars are, you know, per the law, to be funded by the city. But with that said, this slide shows you, over the last several years, the investments that we have made on the school side for costs over the hundred and fifty thousand, specifically, the Durfee Field House for one point one million, the Talbot Drainage and Parking Lot for almost one point one million, the Pace Building for just over five hundred thousand. For the Green School, we've proposed three playgrounds to cost five hundred thousand. Henry Lloyd, the construction of the Egress Road, cost us four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. The Pace Building, the children installation, was four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The Dorn Playground is estimated to be two hundred and five thousand dollars. And to date, for the Durfee Athletic Fields, we've put in nearly three point six million, and we are going, we are going to move forward, we're going to move forward to the school committee to propose to fund the Phase Three, which is the final phase of the Durfee Athletic Fields, for one point five million dollars. So as you can see, we've put in significant amounts of money on the capital side from our budget, you know, to help, to help the city and to maintain our schools. In addition to that, and I didn't include here on the slide, through ESER funds, we have put in for seventeen million dollars worth of HVAC work across the school district, so, you know, for various schools, so.
Counsel Vice President?
Counsel Kilby?
Yeah, just a quick comment on the, on the high school and the campus. I drive by there literally daily, and it's just wonderful, you know, wonderful, so we're on time and on budget.
Yes.
I had some conversations with Mr. Pacico a couple of weeks ago, and I guess you're planning to do a droid, a video of the campus, because it's, it's like, it's now like Stone Hill College, it's like, it is truly, it's almost like, it is a college campus, and it's, I'm very, very happy and proud, and I swell up with pride when I see all that, that activity, and, and maybe getting back a little bit to what I asked the superintendent about, if you give a reason for students to stay at the campus after school hours, participating in some type of activity like that, then it's, it's totally, it's very, very important. So I just want to say kudos to not only the councils here who voted for that, to appropriate the money, but the school committee as well, and all the wonderful work. It's unprecedented, really, and it's just, like I said, it swells me up with pride when I see all that great activity up there. So, thank you. I yield.
Mr. Almeida?
This slide, just as a net school spending compliance slide, you can see from eighteen to 2022, where funding has, has been when the end-of-the-year report has been filed. So you can see that we've been anywhere from ninety-eight point seven percent through a hundred percent when filing the end-of-the-year report.
Counsel Kadeem?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So just on that, that slide, so what's the significance to the common amount, which says the amounts include prepaid tuition of one point seven?
So I've reduced the amount, so for example, in FY20, where it says short, one point three million, the report that came back to us from... the report that came back to us from the DESC was the 1.3 million plus the 1.7 million. And the reason I have it at the 1.3 million is because, in essence, the funding does come from that year. So we're funding an expense that's the first quarter of the following year.
From the prior.
But we're funding it from the previous budget, so that's the reason why it's reflected that way.
Okay, so, so I guess that would lead to my question, so if we're short in the previous year, why haven't we spent that money? Is it just due to the timing of the money coming back?
Correct.
So we're, we're.
So, so I've only included this slide just as a representation to show you what's happened over the years. But the city, each and every time that this DESC has come back to us and said, you know, you owe us a million dollars, the city has given us the money to make up these short costs.
Yeah, so I, so I guess, and I, I appreciate that, so I guess from our, from the city council standpoint, we should be looking to make sure that, number one, obviously, we're budgeting 100% of net school spending, right? Which is required by the law. So if we're not, obviously, we need to get you that funding in advance so you have enough opportunity to actually spend it down. If not, you just, again, essentially sitting on 1.7 million dollars in FY nineteen, rolling it into twenty with prepaid and 1.8 in twenty going into twenty one, right? So, so a timing mechanism, so when, when do we typically get notification in terms of not meeting net school spending? And then, you know, what's, I guess, what should be the expected turnaround time from the city council standpoint to make sure that we're at least asking the question as to have we made the appropriate allocations over to the school to make sure that we're at 100% of net school spending?
So typically, the process is the end of the airport, the deadline for the end of the airport is September 30th. I typically report out to the school committee in the October timeframe to let them know what I've submitted to the state. The DESC does not typically certify it until, it, it all depends, changes over the years. But typically, it's around February vacation is when we get the official certification from the DESC, and they let us know at that time what it represents. And and a lot of times, what happens is what we had submitted previously changes because of other different factors, you know? And so we've historically waited until the certification to then come to the city to come, come back for the month to say, hey, this is what the DESC has certified, and this is what we're looking in order to meet the requirement.
But when your, your end report is due, so October, you, you have a, a good handle on where you think the number's going to be, right?
Absolutely.
So we could probably be having those conversations, assuming that we have a funding mechanism to appropriate whatever we think it is, and then if there's any additional monies, then we can deal with it when that's released by the, by DESI in February, right?
Correct.
At least you're dealing with October, November, trying to spend down if it's close to a million dollars or on average, you know, just call it one, 1.6 million. And I didn't do math, so don't test me on that. All right.
Absolutely.
Okay. I yield.
Do you yield? Ms. Robeta.
This is the ESER slide, so we, we got, we received three allocations for ESER. ESER one was 4.7 million. That grant has already been fully spent, the grant ended 9/30/22. ESER two, the grant was just over seventeen, is for just over 17 million. The grant ends September 30th, and at this time, there's about 5 million dollars in the account. And we have various expenses that will happen between now and September 30th, and all the funds will be spent. ESER three was for just over thirty, just over 39 million dollars. For that grant, we have until 9/30/24 to spend down the funds. And to date, we've spent the funds on pre-K expansion, community facilitator positions, paraprofessionals. We gave money to the private schools. We did things during COVID for the COVID rooms, professional development, technology, transportation, and the HVAC work, as I had previously mentioned. So this is our budget for 2024, our proposed school operating budget is 163 million, nine twenty, one ninety seven. That represents 100% of the governor's budget. And as previously mentioned, the transportation budget on the operating side is proposed to be 10 million dollars.
But total cost is 12 million for transportation?
Total cost is 12.8 million, that's, that's, that's what the total cost is, yes.
Sure, so in this new budget, we are proposing to add 166 positions out of the operating budget, and that includes 70 teachers, 70.5 teachers. And and I will say that some of those teachers are ESL coaches as we grow our strands in, in schools, regular classroom teachers, special educators. We also have paraprofessionals. Last year, we had a focus on kindergarten and first grade. This year, many of our paras are for pre-K and special ed inclusion classrooms as well as any sub separate classrooms where we had one para and we're adding a second para to the classroom. We also are expanding our SEL liaison, student support specialist, as I said at the beginning of the presentation. We, our school committee actually worked with us in creating this new position that was, is between a counselor, is somebody that's on track to probably become a counselor, and they are working closely with our school adjustment counselors. They are, it, it's been a tremendous position. The model, for instance, at, at a middle school might be, they have four or three school adjustment councils because they do mini teams, so by grade level, so they would be a SAC, a school adjustment counselor assigned to that grade level as well as a, an SEL liaison, the vice principal, and the guidance counselor, so. And those have been a tremendous asset to our schools, and we're expanding those by 12. And we also have director supervisors, as I said in the beginning, where restructuring our facilities and organization, facilities department, so we have some supervisory positions there. We're adding some custodians, additional five safety officers. I don't think anybody can argue with the priority of safety across the district. And our goal is to have a safety officer in every elementary school. Now, we don't have one in every single elementary school. We have them at the middle and high, and we want to make sure, we have a couple of them spread throughout the district. But we, we need to have a safety officer in every school. And we are also proposing to add four additional groundskeepers, cluster coordinators in the special ed department, two vice principals, we have, at CUS, we have three vice principals, one per grade level. We want to replicate that model at Morton and Talbot, so we're adding two vice principals there. We're adding two guidance counselors, also department heads, two department heads. As you notice across, we have some positions coming from grants. So in one case, we are converting a coach, Spencer Ward, and for instance, they have English Language Arts Department head, but they have a math coach, and that principal has requested to convert that position to a math coach, a math department head also. And that's comparable to the rest of our schools. We're adding a nurse as well as technology, adding one position there, the finance department, another position, an admin assistant, a clerk, and we have an athletic trainer, we have a full-time athletic trainer and a part-time athletic trainer. Currently, positioned the part-time, we haven't been able to fill that, the need is there. We want to add a point five to make that a full-time and hopefully recruit somebody. So as you can see, all of these positions are really to support what's going on in the school, in the classroom as we aim to support our staff.
Counsel Reposa.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The, does this include the reorganization that was discussed last night?
Yes.
Okay, so that, is that under the director slash supervisors?
Yes.
Portion, okay. And then the other question is, in comparison to last year's new positions and now, are there any positions that were not filled and are rolled over for this year?
Yes, I'm sure there are, because we, we currently, as I said before, we're currently in a position where we're struggling to hire, we've been hiring all year long. So we still have some parapositions that may not have been filled, et cetera, so, yes.
So what's the net difference between last year's and this year's as far as additional positions?
I know that we have currently 63 teaching positions open still, spread out across the district. And that could be interventionist, classroom teacher, or special educator, I will say, special educators and ESL teachers are a priority, and that's something that people are struggling with to fill.
So the positions that were unfilled last year are being rolled over again this year in hopes they can be filled, essentially?
Well, there, there are kids in the classroom.
Yeah, so I understand that point, for sure, I get that point, okay, thank you, I yield.
Counsel Kadeem.
Thank you, I had questions similar to that, along those lines that Counsel Reposa had discussed. Last year, we, we had roughly the same amount, right, like about 166 new positions coming in. So, and I'm, I'm sure a school committee has asked this question, so I, I just, my own justification. At what point do we level off in terms of where we are for positions? And I know it's, on any given year, you'll always have one or two positions that, you know, looking at new trends, things of that nature, you'll have to make some adjustments, but overall, that we're not seeing like 166 or, or 100 new positions coming in, when do we really kind of level off or plateau?
I, I, I mean, I would like to say, because I think that question was asked last year also, because we want to make sure that the budget is sustainable and we're not, it, it, we don't want to add positions just for the sake of adding positions, right? We also know that we're a district in need, a high needs district, that our teachers need support. So we're not performing where we need to perform, so we need to put the supports in place in the classroom until we see that we are getting to where we need to, you know, we, we are raising student achievement, so. I hope that we're not here next year, and I'm saying, because Kevin and I had this discussion, I said, I think we were at just about the same number last year. I hope that I'm not here next year saying we're going to add another 170 positions, because you're right, at some point, we're going to outgrow space for the adults, right? So we, it does have to stabilize, but we need to stabilize. Our kids, our, you know, are still lacking, right? They're coming in, they're struggling academically, they're struggling socially and emotionally, and we have a responsibility to do whatever we need to do to support them, so we're going to add the positions if that's what needs to be done. And when we don't need it, I won't be here asking you for them.
No, I, yeah, I appreciate that, I, I think, just as an administrator personally, that at some point, you do an analysis and say, okay, we can only throw so much money and so much bodies to a problem, right? So then, if it's not working, we've got to figure out another solution and figure out why it's not working. So I was just trying to kind of figure, you know, where do we see our benchmark? You know, are we at our benchmark with these, this 166? I know the city probably has a lot of hoppa when they see some additional bodies coming in, so. And then my, my second question was, which was really kind of in terms along the lines of Counsel Reposa, is, is just your ability to fill the positions, and I know it's been challenging. I was just on a bond rating call with Standard and Poor's, and this is the first year they've ever asked the question about a municipality's ability to attract employees, and which I found kind of astonishing. But there is a, a trend in municipal government, and the analyst that I was dealing with deals with the, the whole East Coast, and it's been a problem the entire East Coast, and I'm sure it's issues in, in the public sector across the country, but what are we doing, and you, you said you've got about 60 positions, 60 teacher positions that are open, and then you're asking for another 70, so that, you know, you're obviously talking about significant open positions. So what, what are you doing, or what's the school district doing to, to try to attract teachers? And I know it's been a challenge to begin with, because obviously, being in a, in an urban setting, that, that's a challenge in itself, so you get to bring in some, some teachers who are, who are new to the profession, and they, you know, they get their feet wet, and they're moving on to other communities that are a little bit more easier, that are also paying better salaries. So I'm, I'm just kind of trying to figure out where you stand on that. And then I guess, my, my second question to that part is, where are we with collective bargaining agreements? So, because I'm trying to figure out the impacts that we could potentially see, because I know there's also discussion about, especially with the mass teachers, a lot of, of major movement and push for salaries. So if we're already not competitive in the district, and then we're starting to look at these new collective bargaining agreements that are being, you know, worked on in other communities, we're going to just struggle even more, so I'm just curious about that.
I'll, I'll start with the collective bargaining piece. We actually will be starting that process again in January. We, we made some significant progress with the last contract and closing some gaps. We still have gaps to close, I, I, we are losing people to our neighboring community, communities. Yours being one of them, you know that. So we, that is a big, that is a big concern for us.
It's all about the administrator.
Right, right.
Just kidding, Seth.
But that, but that's a, that's a real struggle. We are, we are being proactive, I think that we are, like tomorrow, there's a, a recruitment fair at Bridgewater. We are going to the sources, partnering with our neighboring communities and some of the colleges to try to recruit staff before they even graduate, try to get them in there. We're hosting some student teachers to try to have them, you know, stay with us. But that's, you know, that, that's something that's in everybody, that, everybody's mind, because we're all vying for the same people, and the pool is shrinking nationwide, right? It's tough to be a teacher today. So I, I do think that some of it is going to, the new contract is going to have to probably be aggressive so that we can attract people to the city. And we need to continue to be proactive and, and really step up our recruitment and, and probably even look at what we're doing to retain our staff so that they're not going.
Right, retention's the, the big key. So in, in terms of the budgeting standpoint, so are you budgeting 100% of the salaries, are you doing 90%?
100%.
100%?
Yes.
So, so you, right off the bat, you know there's probably surplus in there, depending on movement and things of that nature and timing, because these are, you're doing a full year hire, right, like no mid-year hires or anything like that, for budgeting purposes?
Correct, it's a full, it's a full year, correct, yes.
Okay.
And just, and just to go back to your original comment, Counselor, as far as the budgeting goes with positions, and, you know, the superintendent and I have had a lot of discussions about, you know, the potential funding cliff when this is all said and done and what happens. And, you know, just as, just to put it out there, next year, the ESER funds go away, and we do have 100, 106 positions that are currently budgeted for in the ESER grant. And so those, those positions are all going to roll into the budget for FY 25. So I, we, we already know that, we've already planned for that, but that's, you know, the first big thing that's coming out of all this, and we have to deal, and we have to work with the negotiations, so that's all going to come into play for the fiscal year 25.
So that was going to be my next question in terms of the grant, but so the ESER money, so how many, how many positions are being paid out of that?
So right, as of right now, budgeted is 106, we do have some unfilled positions, but budgeted 106 positions.
That are in the operating budget or outside the operating?
That are outside the operating.
That need to be rolled in.
And so we'll look at all those positions and determine whether or not some of our federal grants can take those positions on, potentially, and try to bring that number down a little bit, but that'll work, that work will happen.
Now, just in terms of, since we're, it's a joint meeting, so layoffs, so unemployment costs, things of that nature. You folks, and remind me, do you folks pick up unemployment, or is this?
We, we do, out of our budget, yes.
You do, you pick up your portion, okay. All right, thank you, I yield.
Does the, is the city, oh, sorry.
No, that's, that's.
That's okay.
Counsel Kilby?
Yeah, just one final question, it tends to pop in your head here and there during the discussion. So how structurally sound, our oldest middle school is Talbot. So briefly, I don't need Mr. Pacheco to come down or anything like that. So is there a lot of structural needs at Talbot?
We, we continue to work, I will say that we have made some significant progress there, as well as at some, Henry Lloyd, we're, we're embarking on replacing the windows, et cetera. So I, I think that we are in a better place than we've ever been before. We are trying to make sure that we take care of our buildings, right? So Talbot looks different, but needs still, we need to continue to invest in it. We've made some progress towards it and will continue, Principal Reposa was very good about advocating for his building.
Absolutely.
So he's on us.
Okay, I'll accept that, and if I have any other questions, I can call you privately, so, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, no other questions?
No.
Ms. Albin, you. Presentation from the city.
So while we're setting up, just a brief introduction. So while what you're going to see is, is essentially an overview. it is the result of what started with individual meetings with every department and division head, with the financial team. I was at the majority of those as well. As a preliminary step, we went through the proposed budget that each department had, looked for places where there might be questions, there might be differences between our expectations and what the department head is looking for and asking for. Basically tried to create accountability and the ability for every department head to explain their budget, to understand their budget. And I'll say that with the Munis upgrade that we just did, our reporting software, these budgets are now, for the first time, all in Munis, which I think is going to streamline this process going forward. But then, once those initial meetings happened, there were additional meetings with the financial team, and then meetings with the mayor and the division head and the financial team. So there's been a tremendous amount of vetting that's gone through this. And I think as part of that, there's been a great deal of professional development that's happened. Because we do have a number of younger department heads and division heads and assistants. So I think that the overall effect of what CFO Almond has done with the division department heads in building the budget has been a really beneficial process for the city and for leadership in the city going forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to the CFO.
So I think Seth pretty much carried, followed through with what this slide represents, and we did. It was very much a collaboration between all of the department heads, then with the directors, and then along with myself and the rest of the administration. I just want to comment that we are still going through the budget. You know, everybody puts in like their wish list and what they really want and their needs. And then unfortunately, there's only so much money in the funds. And we have to make cuts and make decisions, and that's what we've done. And we're still reviewing the expenditures and the revenues.
And I will say that the guiding principles around a lot of those decisions have really been set forth by this council over the last several months. We've talked a lot about maintaining the assets that we have, making sure that we're taking care of our facilities, our equipment, our property. And so that's really been the focus, is making sure that we're good stewards of the things that we have before we start talking about buying new things. And so that's been a real focus of this process. And I would just, I want to make sure that the council is aware that those priorities really come from what has been set forth here in this chamber for the priorities of the council and making sure that we're accountable, that we're practicing reasonable, responsible stewardship of the assets we have in the city. Because, you know, ARPA money goes away, and we need to make sure that we're planning for the future. And I think that's what this budget represents.
So I just want to bring point to the fact that we know that there's a lot of financial pressures, and we take that into account. We know there's high inflation and that there's 2.5% on the tax levy. We also know that we want to maintain our current city services. We want to enhance the services to better represent and serve the taxpayers. And we know that we're realigning priorities as we go through. And, you know, maybe funds are provided to one department this year. And the next year, we have to, you know, we know that another department, it's their turn to make an improvement. Just because, again, there's only, the funds only go so far. We also are putting an emphasis on that we are customer service provider, like we are providing a customer service experience. And all of our employees, we want to represent the city, and that comes right down from the top. Again, Mr. Aiken said, the city assets. We want to maintain what we have. We don't want to see, you know, we invest in dollars and then just let it fall apart. So we're also looking at our borrowing needs versus our operating budget, and short-term and long-term borrowing, and not having to rely on as much borrowing. We don't want to continue to do that, we want to build up stability. So the priorities in this budget are having a government that's responsive to our residents and businesses. We intend to fund education at 100% of net school spending. We want public safety, providing a city that is safe to live, learn, work, and play, as well as providing relief to the taxpayers and only implementing half of the debt exclusion. Continuing to develop long-term strategies that provide sustainability, and we're investing in infrastructure to keep pace with growth and improve services. As with any, everyone, public and private, having a stable workforce, retaining employees, training, reducing turnover, and maintaining continuity is important. And it's hard to attract employees in every aspect, in every department. We're also evaluating historical processes for improvement, for improvement opportunities to implement efficiencies, and we're eliminating waste in time and materials. We've been, along with the Munis upgrade, we've been making some other technological upgrades that'll help us with having reduced staffing, just to get things that we just don't have staff to do. And we don't want to waste, we want to reduce errors. So the pressures on us are, as everyone knows, the inflation, there's a very strong competitive market. We have openings, the school department has openings, there's a shortage of qualified workers. Our interest rates on borrowing is increasing, there's rising pension costs, increasing health costs, and the significant increase in local appropriation for education and assessments. Building a stabilization fund a rainy day for strategic future, so that we're not relying on this just for their operating budget. We're reducing our needs to rely on debt for recurring expenditures of capital items, and we're monitoring current market trends that's going on in the banking industry as well. So the assumptions that we made right now are that our, we're estimating $352 million in revenues and expenditures. This is roughly an 8% increase from '23. And I just want to emphasize that we're not final. This is not a final budget presentation. Our budget includes 50% of the Durfee debt exclusion for the high school, totaling $2.6 million. And other revenue sources include a significant increase in Chapter 78 of approximately $19 million. Salaries and wages may include filling vacancies that were eliminated in '21 and unfilled in '23 due to many uncertainties. And our expenses will include the operating needs of the departments to provide the citizens of the city the best services that we can. The budget will include funding school operations at 100% of net school spending. And we have negotiations between the city administration and just one remaining collective bargaining agreement, bargaining unit. And the city will continue to review all capital items on an ongoing basis to evaluate which one-time purchases that we can use ARPA funding for. We want to use these for investments that provide long-term relief on the operating budget. Capital expenditures have not been budgeted in the general fund at this time. We're again utilizing that strategy of investing ARPA funds in long-term. The city will continue to vigorously seek out grants and earmarks to support and invest in local needs to ease the burden on our taxpayers. So our funds in the budget, 51% go to education, 13% to public safety. Retirement and benefits are 21%, and debt service is another 3.9%. I just wanted to, you know, our free cash certification, we had a significant certification in the last couple of years due to the pandemic and COVID and ARPA money that has eased the burden. And our stabilization fund, we're continuing to grow this. And I just wanted to show the years from 2013 to 2022. This represents a draft of what our projected revenues are. They are not finalized. Right now, we're looking at a small increase in what the governor has recommended, just from conversations that are happening. But again, we're waiting for the Senate and the House to come out with their versions, to give us a better idea of where we're going. And right now, this is our proposed draft of what our general fund expenditures will be. And I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Counsel Gilby?
Just one question. I know it's always an issue with regard to getting the state and the Senate and the House representatives' final numbers. So we're approaching May, right? The budget's due for us June 1st?
No, the intent is to get the budget down to around the first, second, no later than the second week of May. Generally, those, I mean, last year, the Senate and how the numbers came out right at the end of April, beginning of May.
Seth, I'm sure you're on the phone quite often with the state delegation. Powerful Senator Mike Roderick, so any idea?
I will say that the mayor actually is taking a direct hand in making sure that he's communicating to the delegation how important it is.
As soon as possible.
Soon as possible. I think everyone knows that the governor herself had an extension to submit hers, and so everything kind of flows from that. That said, I think that we'll end up getting our final numbers at the end of April. I think we'll be able to deliver this to the council in that first or second week in May. And, you know, there's so many things that we can do in-house to finalize and polish while we're waiting on that. I think.
You make your projections like you're doing, and then you can.
I mean, we were meeting right up till.
School committee and Hart and I had a conversation a couple of days ago about that issue. So I wanted to ask that question, go ahead.
I mean, we were meeting with our Director of City Operations today and going through and fine-tuning areas in his budget as well. So, I mean, it's ongoing every day.
Yeah, I believe you. Thank you.
Do you yield? No further questions?
I just.
Counsel Kadeem?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I just had a question. So the slide, when we talk about borrowing versus operating debit, can you just elaborate a little bit more, like what do you mean by that? So are we going to leverage borrowing more to?
No, so I don't want to, the intent is to not have to rely on borrowing. I mean, as we, you did S and P call, we did Moody's. We want to not have to rely on borrowing and be able to build up, you know, our stabilization fund, where we utilize that to fund projects. Obviously not, you know, building a whole new school or anything. But like, I don't want to have to rely on borrowing for vehicles or things that we should be able to build into an operational budget. And with knowing what's coming down over the next few years, we have to ease the burden in the budget. And I have to look at areas, and that's an area that we need to try to ease up on.
So would you, and I don't disagree, but so would you then, because you're rolling in, we've got about $10 to $11 million rolled into the operating budget for debt, right? So you would just be reallocating to specific departments, so we're not going out to borrow?
So the intent is, because of the new schools and how much that's lever, I mean, most of the borrowing is schools. That's a significant portion of our borrowing. The intent is to, we're actively going after grants. We're going after, as, again, as Mr. Aiken's pointed out, the mayor's on the phone all the time, like trying to get earmarks and trying to get funds so we can ease that burden on the taxpayers, because we still have other areas that we have needs for. But, I mean, as you know, we don't have a lot of room in our budget.
No, no, I understand that. I guess I was thinking more along the lines for the smaller capital items, right? So just police vehicles, maybe fire vehicles, where you get, you get a little bit more bang for your buck if you borrow, because you can get some immediate, you know, more vehicles than you can actually build in if you're going to pay for the entire amount, right? So you might be only be able to get three police cruisers in one year if you're building into the operating budget. But if you leverage your borrowing, you might be able to get five or six, so double it if there's an immediate need. That's all I was.
Well, that's more like short-term, like lease-to-purchase items. Those aren't off the table.
You're talking.
I'm just talking overall, big picture.
Okay. All right, with that, I yield. I'll have more questions, obviously, when the budget's finalized.
We have one more from Counsel Reposo.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken, I'm just curious, on the reorg that happened a few months ago now, do we have the, some plans in the projected budget going forward of some of those changes that the Director of Operations is planning on making? That will hopefully reduce some issues here? Is there an idea with that going forward?
So I think what you're referencing is there is a proposal, it's really an ongoing conversation with Mr. Olivera, the new Director of City Operations, to reorganize city operations a little bit, which is, which includes community maintenance, parks and trees, and cemeteries and facilities. So this budget does reflect some of those changes. But I will say that the way in which the changes might be happening is essentially, it has a essentially neutral effect on the budget. So we're not looking to add positions. We're not looking to throw a whole bunch of money at a department simply to change the way it does things. This should be revenue neutral, it should be expense neutral, however you want to look at it. And that's the goal, and that's actually, I think, part of the meetings that we've been having with City Operations to make sure that they can have the people in the right spots to do what they need to do without creating a budget increase that is basically going to, you know, it's two steps forward, three steps back. We don't want to do that. And so that's been the conversation. I think you're going to see some reallocation of personnel, but I don't think it's going to result in any sort of budget change.
So budget neutral, but as far as from a customer service perspective, a better experience?
Oh, my gosh, absolutely, yeah. No, I think that the way in which City Operations is already looking at how we maintain our facilities, our equipment, and how we take care of our people with an eye towards how all of those things come together to take care of the residents, they've already made, I think, some significant changes that are resulting in, you know, things that people are noticing. And I think you're absolutely going to see our ability to respond more quickly. You know, you're going to start seeing the graffiti machine out in the next couple of weeks and months, which I'm excited about. I think that's going to make a very immediate impact on the city. You're going to start to see some of the benefits of some of the ARPA money once we get in the new infrared machine, in terms of paving, in terms of concrete, and the way we're allocating resources to staff those teams. I think the residents of Fall River are going to be able to see that very quickly, especially as the weather gets warmer.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. No further questions? And Mr. Mayor, if you want to call for adjournment, there's a motion. Oh, Council, School Committee, Menegya?
Yeah, sorry, I was a little late.
That's okay.
I didn't know when our time was to ask any questions.
You can ask questions.
The only comment I would want to make is related to the school budget. We've asked the questions a lot of the councils are asking about how we're going to maintain and sustain all of the positions. So we have done that due diligence on that. And Mrs. Pons and Mr. Almeida have provided us with documents that I'm sure they could share with you relative to the Student Opportunity Act projections of how much revenue was going to come to the schools. And that would actually continue beyond the six or seven years, because it's reset the amount of money that we're going to receive. So I think we're in pretty good shape as far as that's concerned, being prepared. But when we talk about the ESR positions that are going to fall off, there's 106 positions. $50,000 a position roughly, you're talking $5 million that's got to get, you know, buried within, in addition to all of the increases that we have. So it might seem on the front like we have a lot of revenue, you know, a lot of money to play with here, but we really don't. So we, I believe, have to be careful with how we go about budgeting going forward. To Counsel Kadeem's point, that at some point, it has to level off, and we're going to be paying for the increases, you know, within the operating budget. But I do want to say that I think we've been prepared, you know, for that. One of the things that, when we talk about the indirect cost agreement, I've been an advocate for reopening that. But it's basically been going on for seven or eight months since the, you know, July timeframe. And really, we, it shouldn't take that long to look at an agreement. And we go back and forth with, you know, putting funds in, we're going to pay for this, we're going to pay for that. So I just think it's high time that we actually get to an actual agreement. The agreement that we're operating on is four or five years old. So I've asked it for reopening, the school committee voted back in July for that to be opened. And here we are in April, and we still don't have an agreement. But we're going to talk about, well, we might do this, we might change it a little bit. Well, why are we waiting all this time? We don't need actual figures. We need actual, to have a plan where we can try to work together, as far as I'm concerned. One of the issues on the, those slides weren't real quick, and we don't have copies of them, so I can't go back to it. But when you look at expense forecasts around the city, I think we'd be remiss if we're going to have this joint meeting and we don't talk about how we're going to fund Diamond going forward. I haven't seen one slide or one information about that. And that's the biggest issue facing our schools, our city right now, in the finances. And the purpose and the agenda of this meeting said it was for its financial condition expense forecast. That's the biggest issue facing us, and we haven't even talked about it here at the meeting. So I personally was looking forward to just try to figure out what is the plan going forward, to see how we can fund that. And I know we have the Durfee debt exclusion that is there, but Diamond doesn't have that. So I think that's a major issue as far as the revenue for the, and the expenses for the city. So I do think that the city pays the 100%. At one point, they always get to the 100%. But I want to just reiterate that the city's not giving one cent beyond the 100% to the schools. So no matter what expenses this school department and the school committee comes up with of the city, for raises, for new positions, for any kind of, any increases, it's not coming one red cent out of the city side of the budget. It's all going to be coming out of the school budget, every single penny. So that going forward is not going to change. I don't think the city's in a position to give more than what they have to by law. But at the same time, all of that money is within the schools. It's not, it's not coming out of anywhere else of the city taxpayer. So I just think we should have talked about a few other things, but that's just me, and I think that's a major issue that needs to be addressed. That I yield, thank you.
Madam President, Vice President, I'm sorry. So the meeting's not over. I mean, it brings up two valid points, so I think we can still talk about them, right? So I think the indirect cost agreements are, I don't know if you folks want to respond to why we haven't been able to. And I, listen, this is the first time I didn't know you guys were, you folks were talking about indirect cost agreements. I know it's come up in the past, but obviously, the school committee is familiar with it. So just why hasn't? So, just why hasn't it gotten done, that's all.
And I would just like to ask a question. Do we have copies of the PowerPoints for members of the school committee? I didn't realize that they didn't get a copy. They should have been given a copy as well.
Madam Vice President, I think they're missing the city's presentation. Is that what it was?
Yeah, but you don't even have yours. You don't have the one from the... Oh, you did get yours. Oh, okay. I thought Mr. Aguirre said he didn't get any.
No, no, they didn't get the...
Do we have... We have copies.
Yeah.
Please make sure the school committee members can get a copy. Thank you. Mr. Kadeem, continue.
Oh, no, no, I was just... I mean, I'll leave it to Mr. Aguirre. He asked two valid questions, so I think we should, while we're here, get some responses.
So, just to respond to the indirect cost agreement, we have met, we've had a couple of meetings, and we have had several emails. We are going over various items in the agreement. So, you know, we're trying to get there. We're not there... We're not quite there yet. But as soon as we have some concrete stuff, you know, back and forth and stuff that we agree on, we will bring it forward.
Is there a timeline? Have we put together, I guess, a goal that we would kind of need to... To an agreement on indirect cost agreements or changes to it?
So, no, we have not had... We don't have a timeline. But, you know, sooner the better. And, you know, the agreement's still... We do still have an agreement. We just... We have an agreement that's in place currently that we've been using for the last several years. And yes, it should... It is being looked at as we speak.
I guess let me ask this question. Is there a reason why... Is there any changes we don't wanna see? Is it... What's... I guess what's the holdup?
I think the holdup...
Or concern?
I think the holdup is that there's a lot to it. I mean, so I... It would be easy to say, geez, you know, the indirect cost, you know, agreement just... You know, it's these five things, and it's, you know, fairly easy to hash out based upon either increase or decrease of costs. But it's actually a lot more than that. You know, one of the things that we're talking about is, you know, if the city is asking the school to pay for X, what does X actually entail? Is it just, you know, somebody's salary? Is it benefits? And, you know, how far does, you know... Who does that extend to? So, there's a lot of nuance, a lot of legal nuance, I think, to that indirect cost agreement. And we're just trying to be careful and thoughtful about how we do it. So, during the presentation about... I think the school's presentation, there was a question of, you know, have you talked about how you're gonna pay for net school spending going forward? And Mr. Aguirre's response was... I'm sorry, Mr. Almeida's response was... Getting confused with Kevin's.
All right.
Was that we have it. And that's a true statement because really, what we've had is a series of smaller conversations about certain aspects of it. So, I think with both indirect costs and net school spending, we're trying to unpack all the different parts, and there's a lot of parts, and go through the things one by one. And it's probably taken longer than expected. So, it's not a great explanation, but I... That's how I see how it's taking place.
And it's also taken time to get information from other outside third parties.
Yeah, that's...
Like PARAC and... Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess, you know, just in terms of Diamond, I know we've had conversations offline with regard to Diamond, but I don't know if you folks wanna just talk a little bit about that, and then I'll yield to that because I think...
We've had a meeting yesterday. Sorry. Sorry. We had a meeting yesterday in the mayor's office. Kevin and I have been going back and forth for months. We're gonna get together to hash out things next week because now that we've gotten some information from outside, like from PARAC and a few others, and the methodology. And that's really what it was. It was like digging through and looking over like the last 20 years of net school spending and indirect costs and the change in methodology.
But I was talking about Diamond.
Oh, Diamond, sorry.
So, our city engineer and community utilities heads attended a meeting with the Diamond folks recently. The mayor was also at a meeting with Diamond folks recently. And I think everyone's just trying to get a handle on where that process is and what the timeframe actually is gonna look like. Because as everyone knows, construction right now is one of the most unwieldy things that you can do, especially on that scale. So, I think when we were all here, was it last summer? You know, the initial vote feels like a lot longer ago, but I think it was only last summer. You know, there was a timeline, and I think that timeline...
That's when our city seal got stolen.
That's right.
It used to be right over there. That was made by Diamond. They took it back on us. And I voted for it. I supported it, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Just a clarification. The reason they took the city's seal back was because they wanted to make the lettering darker so that it would show up. Should be... We should be returning it.
Did you hear that, Councilor C. Seven? He was really upset about that.
Loud and clear, Councilor.
All right.
I just hope that one day I can earn that seal back. But that's for another day.
But where do we stand with... And I'm... Sorry, I'm joking. But where do we stand with the Diamond project? Do we know where they are? Are they in construction documents? They still doing design development? Where along in that... Like, where in that process are they?
They're doing value engineering.
Right, so they're still value engineering the building. So, the actual scope of the project is changing. So, we actually have some meetings scheduled imminently in the next week and week or so, where I think we're gonna get some much firmer answers on where they are and what the timeframe is. Right now, we have a sense that there's an initial bond for construction documents and design that would have the city incur a certain amount of debt, not close to the projected $6 million a year, but starting next year. But at this point, that's a little bit on hold because I think that timeline could be changing.
When you say next fiscal year?
The next fiscal year. And that's just... You know, that's not based upon any hard data that I have. It just... You hear different things. And so, that's why the meeting is scheduled to actually get some real answers, come to a meeting of the minds on what the city should expect, how much it's gonna be, where they are. But the value engineering, I think, is where they're at right now.
Well, obviously, there's... I mean, the discussions we've had was the concern about making those payments with the fact that there's no debt exclusion.
Certainly.
Right. But you've... In the forecast that you have given to us, that was... Were those... Can you remind me, were those numbers included?
They were... So, they were included based on what was provided. Now, it looks like there might be a little bit of a delay. I mean, right now, there's a ban out there, so... And that's been... You know, I was provided numbers around $600,000. That ban ended up coming in over, you know, about $800,000 when I received the assessment from Diamond. Now, you know, they may not be ready to go to fully move forward and be on the same timeline where they would be rolling in like, you know, $2.5 million in '25 and then $6.5 million in '26. It looks like it may get pushed out another year or so. But yes, my projection did show that, and it showed that as a deficit that we're gonna have to address.
I yield.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah?
School Committee Menagia?
So, one of the things on... When I was talking about the debt ex... The indirect cost agreement. So, there's things that I believe we should've been doing all year. For instance, the school committee in one of our early meetings back with the budget, we looked at it and said that the sergeant and the SRO division was coming out of the city side of the budget. So, we all took a vote unanimously, the mayor included, to say that we were gonna fund that this year almost immediately. We would just address it right away. So, that therefore was $100,000 savings in the police budget by one action in one meeting right on the floor. So, since that meeting, it's been six or seven months where we haven't addressed the back and forth. So, my only point in bringing it up is that I think we... If we're gonna say we're gonna try to work together and say what is an expense and what is legitimate for, you know, for that, I talked about the crossing guides as one member of the committee. The crossing guides are not net school spending eligible, but you could logically say that they're actually an expense for schools because they're crossing children to go to school. Logical expense, $350,000 or something like that. We could've immediately, if we did this agreement, while we're still looking for figures from the state and on PARAC and all that stuff, we could've addressed that earlier so that we could say we would pick that up potentially in a vote of the committee. I'd said I would be in favor of that because it's a logical expense for education. But we didn't do that. So, now we're at the budget time, and we have these controversies over the transportation and all that. All I'm asking is that I think together, we need to get these agreements earlier. And if we say we're gonna reopen it every year, that's fine. When we get the numbers from PARAC and these other places. But there's things that we could do to try to... To help make sure that we're doing things that are logical and sound. One of the things that bothers me, and I've been... Said this, I think, at every meeting that we've ever had a joint meeting is about the trash. So, for four years now, we've been coming back to this committee... This meeting. And when we had... The city had budget trouble and the like and said, well, we're gonna... If we did business trash and all that stuff, it would be $250,000 a year. Four years later, that's a million dollars that has been left on the table because we can't address it, however. And that's not in my purview. But what is in my purview is to know that the schools are billed over $300,000 for our trash. So, the schools are billed on the indirect cost agreement, net school spending, whatever, for $350,000 or so for trash. So, we get billed, but how is that okay? So, they take a credit for that on the schools. So, I think that's just a major issue that every year just keeps coming up. And I think it's... We're leaving some money on the table for that. But every time I see our bill come in and we say that they're charging us for the trash, I wonder what's so different about the schools than all of the other businesses, nonprofits, and whoever that doesn't have to pay the trash? It's just an equity thing. And the only reason why I bring it up is we don't have a chance to talk typically together as a group. But I, for one, think it's a good time to talk about things, to try to get things on the table, and hopefully, we can get this agreement in place and have a long-term, a couple hundred thousand dollars that we pick up potentially, and it's gonna save you money, you know, going forward. The Diamond question that was asked, we talked about Mr. Almeida having $5 million projection three years from now. How are we gonna pay for it? That's a legitimate concern, in my opinion, for the... It should be for the city and the council and the taxpayers. So, that's why I brought it up is I think it just keeps getting, you know, passed over. But it's gonna become at some point a major problem. And if we're having trouble already with funding transportation and the schools, then like, what are we gonna do then? I just raise it as a concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, public committee?
School Committee first.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. To the city council's side. You made a motion? There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. At this time, before everybody leaves, I... I mean, you can if you want to, but at this time, we'd like to call down all of the members of the auxiliary police department that are here this evening. And we do have Deputy Chief Cullen with us. And Mayor Krugan is also here. They can come right down around the table. The Volunteer Auxiliary Police Department began in Fall River in 1950, and they served for 72 years. Due to legislation, the unit was disbanded on July 7th of 2022. Deputy Chief Charles J. Cullen was the commanding officer of the auxiliary police unit from June 22nd of 1997 until it disbanded in July 7th. And I reached out. I thought these people, men and women, need to be thanked for all of the service that they provided us. So, I reached out to former chiefs. And there are some letters here from the former chiefs that I'll read to you.
Councilor Vice President, may I interrupt you? I apologize. We probably should open up the regular meeting?
I really wanna get this done because I told them 6 o'clock.
Okay, I'm just... I'm not trying to be overly technical, but...
That's fine. It's not gonna take long.
Thank you.
I'd like to express the service provided by the Fall River Police Auxiliary during numerous annual events that contributed to our ability to provide safe and enjoyable events. The service and volunteerism has been provided for many years by the men and women of this unit at no cost to the city of Fall River. During my service as chief of police, it was a pleasure to serve with them, providing these services, and to now participate in honoring this unit. And this is from retired police chief Francis McDonald. I'm writing to support and to regret that the Fall River Police Department Auxiliary Policing Unit has been disbanded due to an act of legislation. I first learned of the auxiliary policing some 46 years ago when I was a young student of criminal justice. I became a member of that unit. Although my duties were limited to assisting and crossing patrons on Sunday morning masses, the experience of wearing the uniform inspired me to strive to one day join the Fall River Police Department. Little did I know at that time that I would one day rise to the level of chief of police. Back in those days, the volunteers wore old uniforms discarded. They were hand-me-downs. They were cleaned, refurbished, retrofitted with a patch. And although we wore what we could fit into, the unit was nevertheless proud to wear that uniform and dedicate time in assisting the Fall River Police Department in events, from crowd control to traffic control to establishing presence at city events. Many years later, when I came to depend on the unit as chief of police, I found a professional, modernized, well-disciplined unit under the very dedicated command of now-retired Deputy Chief of Police Charles J. Cullen. The unit had been outfitted with brand-new uniforms, met regularly, training had dedicated volunteers, some who had served nearly 30 years, and their duties had greatly expanded. These men and women who dedicated a minimum of four hours a week, but often exceeded that relieved the Department of Assisting Officers in Special Events, Traffic Control, et cetera. relieved the Department of Assisting Officers in Special Events, Traffic Control, et cetera. During my nearly 10 years as chief of police, these volunteers not only performed exceptionally at all assignments, but saved the city of Fall River a considerable amount of money for what would have been an overtime expenditure. And they did it without a complaint from the Officers Union, who had grown to respect each of these individuals. I extend a sincere thanks and gratitude to all of the, who have dedicated their time over the many years in the existence of the auxiliary policing unit, and in particular, Deputy Chief Cullen, for his dedication to assuring their professionalism. Although legislation was unfortunately resulted in the disbanding of the unit, their many hours of volunteerism over the years, it deserved the recognition that they will receive from the city of Fall River tonight. I extend my personal thank you to all who have served selflessly as a volunteer. Your service was greatly appreciated. And that was from Chief of Police Jack Souza. The Honorable City Council, I've been asked to submit a letter in support of the Fall River Auxiliary Police. Council Pereira is known to have the pulse on the community, and this endeavor bears that. She is quite correct in recognizing the efforts of the men and women of the Fall River Auxiliary Police and their command, the commanding officer, Deputy Chief Cullen. The auxiliary are the unsung heroes of the Fall River PD and the city of Fall River, and they have served us through thick and thin weather, in blizzards, a hurricane, a fire, and countless parades and festivals. They have been there to support the citizens and citizenry. They have been a professional and vital part of the Fall River Police Department and our community. Always on time and on post whenever and wherever needed, and I had the pleasure of swearing many of them in, presenting them with the Fall River Police Department Unit Award at our awards brunch ceremony in 2015. They earned the award that makes no mistakes. I would be remiss not to recognize Deputy Chief Cullen. The auxiliary police were successful, not by accident or miracle, but by being led by Deputy Chief Cullen. He spent hundreds of hours training and drilling, and like them, he received no compensation. The auxiliary police and Deputy Chief Cullen volunteered their time, and they missed family events. They spent hours and days in the sun and the cold and the snow, not for fame or fortune, for the love of the community. We all owe a debt of gratitude to the men and women of the Fall River Police Department Auxiliary Division. They have served their community with pride, honor, and distinction. Thank you all so much. I miss you all. God bless. Former Chief Dan Racine. The last one is brief, but I think it deserves time to thank people properly. Thank you for offering me an opportunity to recognize the Fall River Police Auxiliary Unit. More than 50 years these volunteers dedicate their time and serve the city of Fall River's community with professionalism and pride. They were well-trained, worked long hours directing traffic, providing crowd control, and offered in poor weather conditions. I recall in my early years at the Fall River PD, being grateful for the auxiliary office and the coverage that they provided at city events. Their presence allowed me to continue with assignments on patrol, and they very much contributed to our overall team effort. Much later, when I had the privilege to serve as chief, I again appreciated the auxiliary unit for their dedication and their willingness to help in a moment's notice. They provide valuable public service while also benefiting the city financially. They have saved us millions of dollars. The contributions of Deputy Chief Charles Cullen for his lengthy leadership to the auxiliary police unit cannot go unnoticed. Under his tenure, the unit was prepared and always conducted themselves in a professional manner. Deputy Chief Cullen was a strong advocate of the unit. His commitment to their success is worthy of recognition. To all the men and women of the auxiliary police unit, thank you, thank you, for your years of selfless service. You provided valuable support to the Fall River Police Department, and you did so in a positive manner, and you also have my utmost gratitude, respect, and appreciation, former Chief Jeffrey Cardoza. So from the city council, we have citations for all of you. And Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to.
I have obviously seen the work of the Fall River Auxiliary Police for a number of years at every festival, on every street corner. They always took the time to help people, make sure people were safe, and saying thank you like this is probably not enough for the work these gentlemen did and this, and this young lady, and we really appreciate all they did for the city. Going forward, I always thought we were going to be able to get them back in one form or another, and we're not done working on that, because we know what they do to make the city safe and to move Fall River forward. So I really appreciate their work, and I'm glad Counselor Pereira invited me here tonight to extend a thank you to these gentlemen.
And unfortunately, two individuals, since they disbanded in July, two individuals have passed away, but their family members are here to receive it in their honor. David Elmer. Thank you so much. Sergeant Jose Baptista. The ladies' panelists, Reno Farias.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Dennis. Dennis Farland.
Elementary school, he would come to make the class.
Oh, really?
Oh, God.
Thank you.
Over 50 years.
Over 50 years.
Oh, I don't, thank you, sir. Sorry.
Captain, 25 years of service.
I remember this guy. I used to see him all the time.
To Deputy Chief Charles Cullen for all the work that he has done. And these plaques that were made that everyone has, they were also made by Roxanne, whose father was a Fall River police officer. So we figured you deserved a citation, and we did a little plaque. Thank you all so very much. Mr. Cullen's going to take a picture of you all together. Oh, you want to take a picture here? Oh, I was going to have you guys take a picture. Well, take a picture near the council. Yeah. I'll take a picture of you all.
You remember when I was in high school, you pulled me over?
Yeah. I've got notes on here, yeah. I do.
Sean and Mom.
Money front.
We're going? I didn't, I didn't realize we were ending. Sorry.
Yeah. All right. We'll wait till. I forgot my off. All right, I got everybody. All right. Cheese. Fall River, whatever you want to say. Auxiliary, got it.
Thank you all very much. I know that was a little bit out of order, but I believe that it was well-deserved. Thank you all extremely. You're welcome. The city council meeting, public hearings come to order. Public hearings come to order. The clerk can call the roll. Counselors Kadeen.
Here.
Dionne.
Here.
Kilby. La Liberty. Pelletier. Raposo.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
President Kamara.
I'm here.
And Vice President Pereira.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of a public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
First item, Jeremy Corovo, 146 Elizabeth Street, for removal of the curbing as follows. Existing opening of 12.7 feet, curbing to be removed eight feet. Curb to be added, none. Combined opening proposed 20.7 feet. The parcel is currently serviced by a 12.7 paved driveway. The property owner is proposing to extend the opening an additional eight feet for total opening of 20.7 feet. The applicant has received site plan review approval and shall be required to repair any and all shoulder sidewalk roadway curbing effect by this construction activity. Are there any proponents? No proponents? Are there any opponents? Nope. Do you have any questions, Counsel Kobe?
No.
On that opening? Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay. The next, are we closing? No opponents? No proponents?
Motion to close.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is an auto repair. Joseph DeMello, 317 Middle Road, Acushnet Mass, doing business as JDM and Son Incorporated, for license to operate an auto repair shop on 1262 Brayton Avenue, Lot J242, assessors plan. Any proponents? Any opponents?
Motion to open. Sorry.
Second. All in favor?
Yep.
Any opponents? No proponents? No opponents?
Motion to close.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to take a break?
No, let's keep going, please.
This gentleman wants to say something. Okay. The city council committee on finance meeting. There is nothing in finance. Want to do citizen input?
Yes.
There are. The roll call, please, for finance committee. Counselors Kadeen.
Here.
Dionne.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
La Liberty. Pelletier. Raposo.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
President Kamara. Vice President Pereira. We have five people for citizen input. Lenny Tavarez. 603 Third Street, subject matter veterans, and Robert Guinan, 258 Savoy Street, subject matter veterans.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Guinan. I have a letter here from the War Veterans Council, Commander Charles Demme, and the, the motion before the council was to limit the amount of funds veterans organizations can request and/or receive to be no amount of $50,000 a year. The, about, I have a letter which I'm going to read from our commander. The Fall River War Council, Veterans War Council represents 16 veteran organizations, 13 of which are based in Fall River. Express our appreciation to the Fall River City Council for addressing the issue of funding for our veterans organizations, often referred to as the quarters of allowance. But we do not in favor of the proposal that is being considered by the city council to limit the amount of funds that the veteran organizations can request or receive $50,000 per year from the city or other funding organizations, such as ARPA funds. There are two major reasons for this opposition. First and foremost, the amount of funds that the city or town can allow to the veterans organization has already been determined by Massachusetts State Law. Title VII, Chapter 40, it specifies a formula that determines the amount of funding that can be allocated based on the city-town total property valuation. The Fall River total overall value is nine million, eight, eight, I'm sorry, nine billion, 800 million dollars. Massachusetts State allows a minimum of $10,000 for every one million dollars of validation to determine the amount of funds limited veterans organizations of Fall River can receive. Following the statute, which we recommended of the mayor and approval of the city council, or two-thirds majority vote of the city council of our city's veteran organizations, may receive up to 800,000 per year for quarters of subs, of subsidies.
Secondly, since our veterans organizations were displaced from the Veterans Armory on Bank Street, we have struggled to find new quarters. Some are using garages, while others are using some city-owned property. But the majority of our 13 veteran organizations do not have a permanent headquarters and are forced to rent or otherwise borrow meeting place, space, while we await the Veterans Armory being repaired and reopened to us. It is also important to note that our veterans organizations do not receive any state funding and together have received no more than $10,000 a year from the city to be divided among our 16 veteran organizations. Last year, Mayor Paul Coogan, through the Veteran Service Officer, was able to provide a total of $100,000 that was divided among our organizations. For this, we are grateful. But other than that one-time funding, each veteran organization that is part of the Fall River War Veterans Council is self, self-funding, surviving, and having quarters only through our fundraisers and individual donations. And as we all know, during the COVID, we could not have anything, so there was no.
Mr. Tavarez, 30 seconds.
Fundraiser. It has become clear.
Motion to rule. All in favor?
Aye.
It has become clear that the city does not intend to repair the armory, so that means that we will not be able to return to our initial headquarters previously provided by the city. Each of our organizations now hosts fundraisers to provide quarters, scholarships, and civic services, et cetera. If the city council limits the amount of funds that the veterans organizations can request or receive would be unfair, especially since other organizations, like the arts, have received over a million dollars each. We support that each veteran organization requests for funds should be made on its own merits and in accordance with the mass, state law, and city ordinances, following the established guidelines that determine the amount of funds to be awarded and the eligibility of the organization to request assistance. We thank you for your attention and consideration in this matter, and we welcome you to join Fall River Veterans and all veterans organizations in the upcoming Memorial Day Parade on Sunday, May 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dionne.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If I'm incorrect, correct me. I assume your comments are in regard to my resolution that's going to be heard tonight. And if they are, I would like to clarify, that is not what the resolution is. That is not what the resolution states. This resolution is designed to give the veterans groups more money, not limit money. As you said, you've got $10,000 each from the administration. This would give you the ability to get $50,000 more each.
Excuse me. We only got $10,000 for 16 organizations.
Oh, okay. So you only got $10,000 for 16?
Yes.
My resolution is trying to give you $500,000 for 16 organizations. It's not to limit how much money you could have or change any rules. And I know there are some veterans groups who have fewer members, some have more, some require more funding, some require less, depending on what it is your organizations do. In the event that people would apply for up to the $50,000 and not all of it was used, there would be nothing stopping the ones who need more from a second bite at the apple. However, I'm trying to give you an additional $500,000, not limit you to $50,000. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counsel Washington.
I think we need to wait for this motion to come up, because it's not at all how her resolution was wrote, so maybe we can amend it, because it's $500,000 amongst 13 groups, which was a $50,000 cap each group. So maybe we should wait to look and talk about it when it's on the floor, so we can amend her resolution, so it's an unlimited amount.
Do you yield?
I yield.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Before I call up the next person, I know you have to read the open meeting law between everything, and I didn't. It's been a very crazy day, and I'm really not feeling well myself. But pursuant to the open meeting law, any person can make an audio or video recording of a public meeting or may transit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. The next person to speak is Nelson Basquez. Accountability. Hi, Nelson.
Hello, members of the city council. To Diamond's point, it was reported last year that the cost is going to be, not only the 6.5, but an extra 69, approximately $69 every, for every $100,000 in home value. And that's on the horizon. But when the proposal to cut education by $11 million came up, which is ridiculous, it just alluded to the fact that money's running dry, and he needs money. And what's striking to me is that through, through all of this, is that it's becoming clear as day. So. So, and before anyone tries to say that I'm lying and going to disregard what I'm saying, the next time I sit here, okay, it's going to be proven again that he has, has been deceitful, and he's stealing from the pockets of the people knowingly and purposely because he needs money. There is no red line that will stop him from crossing. And the next time I come here, I'm going to purposely give each and every one of you this packet here, live in front of the camera, because that's how we have to do things around here, because everything gets buried behind the curtain, and that's not even beneficial to the community. You see, he made a promise two years ago that if he was found to be doing anything illegal, he would walk out that door. Well, that time is coming for him to live up to that promise, because that promise should not be hard to keep. And it should be incumbent upon this council, because the city is going to be watching what his next move is going to be, and to see what he does. Because if he does not leave office and resign, he has broke, he has broke his oath of office. Now, I don't know who's running for reelection here, but the thing is, you all have a job to do. Call him out, because if he does not leave, he has broken the law. And that is just, is not called for. It's not how you do things in this city, especially reaching into the pockets of the people like that knowingly and brazenly. And this right here is going to be given to each and every single one of you. So, the city is going to be watching what happens next, and that day is coming very soon. So, it's, it's, it's going to be truly, truly groundbreaking when you have actual numbers showing what it is, and him putting down this budget, knowing that he knowingly lied and stole from the people. And that, my friends, is illegal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Next person to speak is Joe Cavallo. Joe, is it easy for you to sit there? Because those mics are live.
Yes, you can stay right there, Joe.
Yeah, just. You're welcome.
Joseph Cavallo, 400 Columbia Street, here in the city. So on March the 7th of this year, in a victory for free speech rights and core democratic principles, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruled that government officials cannot silence members of the public based on the substance of their input during quote "public comment" end quote periods of government meetings. Specifically, the state's highest court ruled that quote "civility" end quote codes that limit criticism of public officials are contrary to multiple provisions of our state constitution, which provide quote "robust protection of public criticism of government officials" end quote. Carol Rose, the executive director of the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts, of which I'm a card-carrying member for decades, stated, quote, "Our state constitution protects our right to make our voices heard, including by expressing criticism to and about public officials. That freedom goes to the heart of what separates us from repressive regimes." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavallo. The next person to speak, Carlos Cesar, Frost Street.
Thank you again, Carlos Cesar, 367 Frost Street. Thank you, Joe. I think you spoke for everybody that sits on this table and facing this council and all over the state. Clarification is my citizens' input. Clarification for some of councils, but information for the public. For years, I sit on this table, and I talk about the mayor's job, not the person, the job, which we elected for. And because of the timing, I have retaliation. Why I say I have retaliation? Because every time that I sit on this table, I can go away for a year, calls never happen. I sit on this table, less than 24 hours, we got a call. So this time, with somebody that don't even live in the city, was interested why we were not filing, when I say "we," I'm talking about the organization, then our president, the Flint Neighborhood Association Incorporated, why we were not filing our income taxes since 2015. Well, and I said it's, it's coming from this council because of the connections, without mentioning names, but moving forward, the call was done to my treasurer, which going from a difficult time now, being sick and in and out of the hospital, just when everybody had my number, had my Facebook, could very well call me, but they wanted to talk to my treasurer, treasurer. And it's amazing how people don't stop to think for a little bit. How could we be without filing our income taxes, revenues, since 2015? Everybody in this room knows that we were involved just two years ago, okay? That we had to provide not just minutes, minutes, but financial proofs too. So how could we, if we were doing something wrong, okay? Definitely had to be ratified, or we even could be in trouble. But besides that, we have something that we have to provide early, every year. Remember, we own a property that's tax-free, which we have to provide, that we are a nonprofit organization established every year to be a sign of paying taxes. That's number one. And after that, when I clarified that, I took pictures of all my tax files, and I said, "If you have more information, if you want more information, please call CJ Farry. He's been the one filing for a couple of years because my treasurer cannot do it." So, after that, I still got a call now with a question of the Duvall School. I don't know how many times I have to say
20 minutes, Mr. Cesar.
I don't know how many times I have to say. Nobody in this room or this city wants to develop Duvall School more than me. Every time, every time that I have something new, I will let the public know. The first thing, you want to help me? Number one, call my architect to see if he moves faster. Number two, some councils love to give money away. Give me some money. It's a good project. You know the building, you know the project we do for the city. Help me.
Three minutes, Mr. Cesar.
So with that, with that said, everybody has my number. Don't be afraid, I don't bite. You have questions, ask me, I have no problem. You want copies, you want papers, we have everything filed. Every year, every month, our statement, bank statements are filed. If you attend every meeting, like Mr. Repouza attends every hour meetings, our treasure report is done every single month with all the accounts penny by penny. So with that being said, again, I'm here, maybe I will got another friendly call tomorrow, God knows, but it's not, I've been this for a long time, and I'm not sitting on that side, but so it's not new for me. But just for the people out there, we are filed, we are update, 2022 got filed February 28, because January, January was closed, he could not file, but January, February 28, I have the copy of the receipt, I will share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. There a motion to adjourn Finance Committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want a break?
No.
Keep moving?
Yep.
Regular meeting of the city council, clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Yep.
LaLiberty? Carrera?
Here.
Pelletier? Repouza?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara.
We'll stand for a moment of silent prayer, and if we can keep President Kamara and his family in our prayers after the loss of his mom.
Madam Vice President, if we could, also keep Jeffrey Sylvia in our prayers, his wake and funeral, it's the wake today, funeral tomorrow, dedicated person to the city of Fall River, and also to our youth of our city.
Thank you. And also Bobby Rizicky, who was very instrumental with the school department as well. We're losing good people. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reappointments of, reapportment of Ryan Lyons to the Election Commission.
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Do we need a roll call? I think all those in favor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 1B is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reapportment of Lisa Robitaille to the Board of Election Commission.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 2 is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Michael Carrera to the Licensing Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There a motion to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 3 is the mayor's communication regarding the school committee's input relating to the compensation adjustments.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Second.
Motion to accept, place on file. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number 4 is the mayor's communication and proposed FY '24 EMS budget.
Motion for finance. Second.
Motion to approve has been made, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 5 is the mayor's communication and Counselor Washington's proposal for the Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $50,000 for the Veterans Kitchen of Fall River.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, then the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Repouza?
I had asked Counsel Washington this earlier, and I know Kara is on vacation this week. Would we possibly have a copy of the application filed for this? Because the only thing we have is a one-pager, and I asked yesterday, and that's still all we have. So I wonder if there's, when Kara comes back, if we get that, copy of that application, if possible?
Okay.
That's all.
Do you have a copy of that, Madam Clerk?
I do not.
You yield, Counsel Repouza? Counsel Washington?
So any questions that I could ask to my colleague and that I didn't answer earlier about the application that you would like for the vets' kitchen?
No, I just want to read the application, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there's a motion to approve, there's a second. Roll call. Counsel Deon?
Through the chair to my colleague in seat 7. So, I'm not even sure how to ask the question. So is this something that you would want to table until you see an application? What, what exactly are you meaning by? I mean, if you're going to look at the application after it's approved, it's almost a mute point. So I'm just curious as to what his intention is. With that, I yield.
Roll call.
Roll call.
I guess, Madam President, if we could just through you to the counselor, if we can just get a response. Yeah, I mean, I think when reviewing this and very much like other, other proposals we put forward, we've had an application to review. So, the one-pager is fine, and I understand what My point is, is I'd just like more information to understand what exactly the funding is going to, and I'm sure Counsel Washington could address it. But I just want like to dot the i's and cross the t's per se, to make sure that if this is able to go forward and it can be supported through Bristol County ARPA, then we won't approve it, and then it doesn't happen, is my concern. That's all.
Do you yield, Counsel Repouza?
Thank you.
Counsel Washington?
So, I understand that. So this is to continue to be able to feed veterans. They are the only nonprofit veterans group that does not receive any funding, any quarters. It's for operational sustainability, to be able to continue to provide food for the veterans that come. They are in need of supplies, they don't receive quarters, they're paying all their own electricity, they're paying for rent, they're paying for all of their own food. They are increasingly getting numbers of veterans and their families. But I understand if you want to wait and get an application, if that's not enough. I yield, Counsel President, Vice President.
You yield?
Yes.
Counsel Kilby?
Well, just for the record, if there's a motion to table, I'm not, I'm not going to support it. I mean, this is not a lot of money, and it's going to a very, very worthy cause. I don't need to see an application. As long as I know that this $50,000 is going for the purpose that is being articulated by Counsel Washington. So out of respect for her and her intention, that's it for me. I yield.
Counsel Repouza?
To my colleague, it's not a question of intentions or not. I would just like more information exactly, how far is this $50,000 going to go? I understand that, Counsel, but it's still, it's still a question to ask. You know? I'm here to do my due diligence, that's all. So, again, I would just like some more additional information on this. And again, food is fine, I'm curious about supplies. I'd like to see the $50,000 do a good work. That's all. And that's, that's what I'm here to ask. It's, it's really not a complicated question, that's all. I yield, thank you.
You yield. Counsel Washington?
I really feel like it's not a complicated ask, $50,000 to continue to feed veterans. I would recommend that any of my colleagues go down there and see the amount of veterans that go down there. I mean, this is a small ask, $50,000 is peanuts as to what they're doing, and they're only one group. I yield, Counsel Vice President.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor?
Yeah. Madam Vice President, just quickly, I mean, I support the kitchen, just, you know, I recognize that my, my counsel wants to see the application, so just to make sure that we've done our due diligence, I'm assuming that they still have enough to, to make it through to the, unless there's something different, but to the next meeting, which is in two weeks. So, I would just ask that, you know, we just table it, let the counselor get his information. You know, one of the things is, is it's unfortunate, because the counselor, this isn't the first time that the counselor has asked for this information prior, so, you know, I, I think, you know, we need to make sure that the information that we've requested to, to be able to make educated decisions and votes is just in our packet, that's all.
So you're making a motion to table, Counsel Kadim?
I would make a motion, yes.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call.
There's a motion on the floor to table, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
LaLiberty? Pelletier? Carrera?
No.
Repouza?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
President Kamara? The motion does not
Tie doesn't pass. Next item on the agenda.
Did we vote to adopt?
Well, it was, it was a split, so it didn't pass.
It didn't pass, but did we
Motion to table didn't pass.
Did we vote to adopt?
Right, motion to approve, and there was a second. Do you want to?
All in favor? Or we can do a roll call?
Do a roll call. There's a motion to adopt, and there was a second, correct? Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Objection.
Next item on the agenda.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, can I just ask a clarifying question? Has an application been filed?
There's no comment after objection.
Can't discuss that, Councillor Raposa.
Well, we, we, I mean, tech- we technically can, I mean, it's still, still on gender item, I mean...
But you objected, so usually when you object, you don't talk about it further.
No, I, I recognize that, yeah.
So the next item on the agenda, item set...
But he wasn't, he wasn't talking about the motion though, right, so it's not the objection.
Talking about the application.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll ask after this.
Councillor Washington, go ahead, can you answer Councillor Raposa's question?
Yes.
You have met with...
Yes, the application has been filed and it just needed to be asked for by Attorney Kara Humm, and you would have been given that prior to this meeting. I yield.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda.
The communication from the mayor and the, in the Community Development Agency's Year Four Annual Action Plan.
Motion to refer to finance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 7 is the mayor's communication and a resolution to adopt the city of Fall River's Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Motion to adopt.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 8 is a communication from the mayor and a request to amend fees for the planning board's schedule of fees and the zoning board's schedule of fees.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on March 28th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying budgets be referred to the full council for action, with Councillor Pelletier absent and not voting, these are the FY '24 budgets for water and sewer divisions.
The motion?
Motion to adopt?
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Seat 2 opposed.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on March 27th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be adopted, this was a resolution regarding the creation of an ordinance regarding compensation of future school committee members, city councillors, and mayors, um, I should read the resolution because this, this was drafted by the committee and the council has not been afforded, um, they have not been able to read this as of yet, so I will read the resolution. Whereas elected officials are dedicated members of the community who devote their time and efforts to the residents, students, and business owners of Fall River, and whereas there has been dissimilar compensation for members of the school committee for over 20 years, in contrast to many other local municipalities, and whereas there have been no consumer price index adjustments for the mayor, city councillors, or school committee members' salaries for over a decade, and whereas residents may be limited in their ability to run for public office due to the lack of present day cost of living increases, now therefore be it resolved that potential adjustments be discussed regarding creation of an ordinance to address the compensation of future school committee members, city councillors, and mayors, with the stipulation that such increases will not be applied retroactively.
Motion to refer to legislation.
Well, I would, I would suggest, um, well, first of all, I think you have to relinquish the, the podium on this one, right? Madam Vice President, I, I suggest have Councillor Kadim go, due to conflict?
Huh, it's not in order, we're not voting on anything.
Okay, Mike, I forgive me, then, I yield.
No, yeah, and she, she wouldn't technically have a conflict, because we don't know who the, it's for future, future members.
No offense, I'm just trying to protect you.
That's okay, thank you, I have my disclosures in and spoke to ethics, but thank you, Councillor Kilby, I appreciate that. So is the motion to refer?
To ordinance and legislation, second.
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number 11 is the proposed ordinance amending the name of the standing committee, which is currently, um, named the Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs, will be renamed Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth, Elder, and Veterans Affairs.
Motion to adopt? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councillor Washington?
I don't know if this is appropriate, I got a, I got a question and information, um, where we put the veterans is very important of where they're going to be taken care of, who chairs that committee?
Me.
I believe Councillor Raposa chairs that committee.
Okay.
You yield?
I yield.
Thank you. So there's a motion to adopt, there was a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Pardon?
I oppose that.
Seat 8 opposed, Lauren, do you have that?
Item 11 actually was a proposed ordinance, so that should be referred to the ordinance committee?
Right.
Item number 12 is, um, the proposed ordinance relating to miscellaneous traffic for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion, so may.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13 is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment?
Second.
And item 14 are the water and sewer rates for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion, so may.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the Parks Division of the Department of Community Maintenance has worked tirelessly to keep city parks clean and safe, and whereas the residents and visitors of the city benefit greatly from rehabilitation efforts to improve public spaces, and whereas local teams and organizations pay fees to use certain fields within city parks, and those payments are placed in the general fund, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with the administration to discuss redirecting the revenue from those fees from the general fund into the Park Division's budget to assist with funding repairs and routine maintenance of city parks.
Motion to adopt resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 16 are citations?
Motion to adopt? Citation? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 17 is the order granting permission to Jeremy Corvo for the removal of curbing at 146 Elizabeth Street.
Motion to adopt? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 18 is the order granting permission to Joseph Mello for the license to operate an auto repair shop at 1262 Breton Avenue.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 19 is the application for the renewal of an auto repair shop license for Brian Vieira at 88 Earl Street.
Motion to adopt? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The police chief's report on licenses?
Motion to adopt? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, 21 are claims?
Motion to refer to corporation counsel? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 22 is a, a letter from a resident regarding neighborhood noise from a, a business.
Refer to committee on regulations, second.
Motion to refer to committee on regulations, uh, motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 23 are drain layer licenses?
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye.
24 are minutes of the zoning board of appeal from January's meeting?
Accept and place on file? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
25 are minutes of the zoning board of appeals from their February meeting?
Accept and place on file? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have minutes of the city council meetings?
Motion to take items 26, 28 together? Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, before we get to the items after the agenda, uh, Madam Clerk, could you check, I know that, uh, Councillor Kadim objected to the $50,000, um, resolution for the, uh, Vet's Kitchen, but that had already been before the council, this is the second time that we've talked about it, you can only object when it comes on once, the first time.
I don't, yeah, I don't disagree, I, that, this is the first time that I knew about it, so...
Yeah, it did.
I could be, I could be wrong.
It did come up before, we had talked about it through, the meeting before that, am I correct, or am I?
Point of information, the first time that it was put on the agenda was to see if there was going to be support when the application was filed, it wasn't a vote on the application at that time.
She's correct.
Madam Clerk, could you clarify that, because it was discussed, and that's why I don't know if it can be objected to after.
See, I don't believe the ARPA request was before you, previously.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I don't believe the ARPA request was, has been before you, previously.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to double check. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda?
Just for the, excuse me, just for the record, the only reason I objected is because it was going to be a 3-3 vote again, and it was just going to fall off the table, so with an objection, it's coming back.
It'll come back. Item number 15A, Madam Clerk?
Whereas according to the most recent census, Fall River is home to over 4,000 veterans, and whereas many of our veterans and their families struggle due to the cost of living, an unprecedented increase in rent, property taxes, and the cost of food, and whereas the need and demand for assistance from multiple Fall River-based veterans groups has also increased, now therefore be it resolved that the city council set up a program dedicating $500,000 of Bristol County ARPA funding with a cap of $50,000 to which all veterans groups may apply for assistance, and be it further resolved that the city council sends a letter to the administration requesting support in this endeavor.
Councillor Dion?
Yeah, um, so clearly, this is just to help all veterans groups, this has nothing to do with capping or anything else, um, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, my assumption was not all would ask for or qualify necessarily for $50,000, that's why I said it at $50,000, if you'd like to increase the dollar amount to $650,000, so all 13 can get $50,000, I have no problem amending the dollar amount, with that I yield.
Thank you. Councillor Washington?
So, I spoke with the veterans groups, I actually met with them after this came out, because I didn't, I was not approving of this, but I didn't want it to be my opinion, so what I did was, I talked to the commanders of the veterans group, and I met, um, in particularly with the War Council, who was, um, commander, who was not able to be here tonight, and the executive director of the, um, Bristol County, who both said that this, it, it clearly is a cap of $50,000, so some of the veterans groups, um, let me just read this, um, the, um, dedicating $500,000 of Bristol County ARPA funding with a cap of $50,000 for each group, so there is a cap, so some of the groups need more than $50,000 for their needs, that, um, would need time to apply, their needs are vastly different, so we're talking about some of these veterans groups that like, could, and don't quote me on the numbers, I don't want to get in trouble for the numbers, but some of these groups have hundreds of, um, veterans in those groups, and some may have two or three, and some are just getting established, their needs are greatly different, some need buildings, some need food, they're all different, so to put a cap, like, I, I, I'm not understanding why on earth would we single out a group and say, we're going to put a cap, we're going to set aside so much money, and you're going to get some, and you're going to get some, but as, uh, this letter from one of the war groups said, hey, you, you're giving our groups unprecedented amount of money, yes, which we want to do, there's like seven our groups, six or seven different our groups, we gave one of those our groups almost $400,000, but for our veterans that served our country, where I cannot support a $50,000 cap, or capping any money, let them come and let ARPA, I mean, we can put whatever we want, but the ARPA people that give the money are going to approve or disapprove, but these are the men and women that served our country with the needs, I met with them, the needs are vastly different, I have been down there, I have seen, it's, it's, it is...
I'm sorry.
It is what it is. I can't support capping this, not from my opinion, from the opinion of the War Council, from the opinion of those groups that I went out and met with, it's almost insulting that we would pick a group to cap, I am sure that this was done in good faith by Councillor Dion, but it should not, we should be very careful about capping any veterans group, I don't care if there was 100 groups out there, if there were two groups, those men and women should be able to come before us in any group and apply for as much money as they need, and we will do fit, so I particularly cannot support this by the information that I received from those veterans groups, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Councillor Kilby?
Yeah, well, once again, it's a, I think we went over this before, it's a resolution, um, a resolution is an expression of the intent of the city council to take certain action, and I listened to the gentleman that spoke intently, uh, I listened to him intently, um, I, I am, I'm not going to vote against something, um, that is going to support veterans, I think we all, we want that, and whether this needs to be tweaked, or reformed, or changed in some manner, we have a committee now that is...
Oh, the advisory committee.
We have the committee that, uh, is chaired by Councillor Raposa, and you can call, I don't know if there's different, varying opinions within the veterans community in terms of supporting this resolution or not supporting the resolution, but I think it's such an important issue that I think it needs to be discussed in that committee, and we'll get the committee's recommendation, and then, well, when we have a full council, we're missing three members here, for, for good reasons, um, then it'll come back, so I, uh, I'll make a motion that this gets referred to the, uh, the Committee on Veterans and Health and Human Services. It's a resolution.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, uh, Councillor Dion?
Let me attempt to clarify again, we're not talking city ARPA funding, which is millions and millions of dollars, we're talking Bristol County ARPA funding, of which I believe we only have approximately $2 million left, so... I would love to give them all hundreds of thousands of dollars, again, this is to help all veterans groups, not pick one group to help, but help them all, including the one that we were speaking of earlier tonight. You know, if you have $500,000 and you, you divide it between 13 people, it's going to be less than $50,000, it's called, it's a cap only based on a dollar figure, not capping any group, does that make sense? It, I mean, $500,000, it goes only so far with 13 groups, maybe they won't even all apply, you want to increase it to a million, increase it to a million, you want to give all the rest of the Bristol County ARPA funding, I'm happy to change it to $2 million, this is about helping all veterans groups, not about cutting anybody's throat, not about limiting, we can only give what we can give, we only have what we have, and you can't give more than what's in your pocket, you want to change it, that we're going to send it to the Fall River ARPA committee, and say, give us 13 million of Fall River ARPA funding, and they're all entitled to a million, I'm on board, and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Councillor Washington?
Councillor, uh, oh, excuse me, point of information, I also spoke with the executive director for Bristol County, and, and he fully understood after we spoke, and he has no objection to this anymore.
Well, so, that's not the conversation that I had, um, or the other groups, so you, um, there was a conversation started off by there, I don't have a crystal ball, well, you don't have to have a crystal ball, because I reached out to these groups, and the needs of these groups are different, and so, based on the information that I have, I don't understand why we were, why we are putting a dollar amount to any group, we haven't put a dollar amount to, again, I go back to, because the arts people were just here, we did not put a dollar amount to the arts people group, but yet, we're going to come down here and put a dollar amount to the veterans group, that's crazy, they should be able to come down here and ask for any amount of money, just like any other group that would want to in the city.
Point of information?
I, um, I'm, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, wait, hold on, go ahead, finish.
So, we should, they should be able to come to us for whatever dollar amount, I cannot support capping... So we should, they should be able to come to us for whatever dollar amount, I cannot support capping anything, any group, any group that comes to us, any youth group, any veterans group, we have not done that, so I am talking about, I cannot support that. As for the information that I received from the veterans groups that I met with, so there is no crystal ball that's needing, that was told to me, so with that, I yield.
Counsel Dion, point of clarification.
There is a group that has been capped, they were capped by the Fall River City ARPA funds at 50,000 for nonprofits. So yes, groups have been capped, with that, I yield.
Can I make a suggestion, there is a veterans-
Send it to the committee.
There is a Veterans Advisory Board that was formed, and perhaps that's the best place, because every group would be able to come and tell you what their needs are.
Great.
And then we would have a better understanding of what groups need what. I mean, some of them, I listened to the gentleman today, when they talked about, they don't have quarters anymore because the armory's gone, they were always promised to go back there.
I think it's a great idea.
Point well taken, that's why I suggest-
They want the Boyd Center, they need expansion.
Have a phone hearing, and maybe it'll come back to us in terms of removing that cap, and we have to approve it anyway, if a group specifically applies, never remove the cap.
Make a motion to-
There already is a motion to send it to Human Services Veterans Affairs, and there was a second.
Point of information, I thought, did, is that going to ordinance before we change that?
Pardon me?
We haven't changed that yet, that's got to go to ordinance, so-
No, it doesn't have to go to ordinance, in the resolution, I requested it, the motion was made to send it to Counselor in seat seven.
Point of information from City Clerk, does it not have to go to ordinance?
Title is not officially changed. I didn't hear back here, I'm sorry. The title is not officially changed until it changes in the ordinance.
Point of information, though, the title of a committee doesn't, doesn't really matter what we send, I mean, we can send financial information-
Send it wherever committee you are.
Right. It's just whether or not we support it going to that committee.
All groups fall into Human Services?
Well, if that committee hasn't been formed, we just voted on that today to form that committee, so what the clerk is saying, that committee adding veterans has not yet been formed.
The title of the committee has not changed.
Right.
But you can, you can-
It's still within a purview of the definition of-
Send it to whatever committee you want to send it to, but the title is not officially changed until the ordinance changes.
That's fine, I just want to make sure that we're not sending it to the Veterans Committee, that's, we have a Veterans Committee that's been established, so we're not sending it there, we're going to send it to Counsel Repoza's group, is that what's?
Well, that's the committee.
The committee, okay.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor that it is going to be referred to the Committee on Health, Human Services, and Veteran Affairs, which would then, Counsel Kilby.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to be too demonstrative, but everyone who's in this room, if you support veterans, raise your hand. Everyone raise their hand. So revisit this.
I'll second Counselor.
You're seconding, okay, so there's a motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Whereas Fall River does not have a veterans tax work-off program, and whereas Mass General Law Part One, Title Nine, Chapter 59, Section 5N allows for the City Council of a municipality to establish a program to allow veterans to volunteer and provide services in exchange for a reduction on the veterans' tax bills. And whereas many veterans struggle financially and could greatly be assisted with a reduction of up to $1,500, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene to research and discuss the implementation of such a program.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned?
Nope, there are three more. Proposed ordinances?
We need a brief recess.
Brief sign ordinance.
Sign it. Thank you all. And I put in a resolution before about veterans and seniors getting tax write-off.
Yeah, I know that-
And that went up to Mr. Gonzo, so you might want to have him at the ordinance.
No, no, I, you're right, I know you did, but ours, they differ a tad, and I made a few phone calls, and we have a senior tax work-off program in the city already. I guess it's been here a number of years, it just hasn't been utilized in quite some time, but it's all been, it's set up through the HR department.
I think that's great.
So I just wanted to set up one up for the veterans as well.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, Lauren and I did speak about your resolution.
You said the top.
So in essence, it just added to it.
Do you blame her? Do you blame her?
They're stuck together, Lauren, they're stuck together.
Well, you're smart.